Each year, they do really great work and it's a crucial piece of the CIP process. So. How is this document arranged? So the CIP begins with an executive summary showing all the projects in the five-year plan and the total cost breakdowns. First, they're listed by category, so they're broken up into five categories. We have facilities and maintenance. Technology. Transportation and utilities. Utilities cover the water sewer and storm projects. So you can find all of the projects listed under these categories. Or you can also look at a specific funding source. All the projects are broken out by their funding source in this document. And this is helpful if you would like to know all of the major projects listed in a specific fund over the next five years. The transportation bond is an interesting example, which was highlighted back in 2020, the last time someone was here to present a full CIP. However, this year we're looking to officially deliver the entire bond program. So this CIP captures the list of final projects that will wrap up that effort. So that's kind of a fun detail. After the listing of projects and the cost tables, there's a worksheet for each project. These are listed by category. The project worksheets include a project description, how the project is funded, information about the project timeframe. So basically, when we anticipate that the project will happen, sometimes this is broken out into the various phases like design and construction if applicable. There's a project scope. History and background if necessary, and then a project map for most of the projects. However, not every project has a map. For example, doesn't really make sense to do a map for a citywide technology upgrade because you can't really map an upgrade to Microsoft three sixty-five. In the back, at the very end, there's what we call the unfunded appendix. There are projects that the city are aware of, but that do not fit within the next five years of capital planning. So projects included in this list may be something that's planned to happen, that's further out than the five years covered in the CIP window. Maybe a project that is a possibility, but just needs some more thought and developments. These are often projects that are included in a master plan, but master plans look out at a longer time period than the five-year CIP. So we like to have them captured here. Sometimes it's a community recommends a project that we just haven't determined how to fund yet. Or whether it's viable, but we want that captured there. And these projects are also listed by category. So I wanted to emphasize that CIP is a fluid planning document, not a budgeting tool. It helps us understand what we think is coming up in the future so that we can plan for it and make sure there aren't any conflicts. It's also helpful to assess whether there's staff capacity to complete these major projects. But things change from year to year and the CIP helps us to capture the changes in the plan appropriately. Sometimes projects may move back and forth between the unfunded list and the five-year window, depending on what's going on. Generally, we do the CIP process first and it's intended to be completed and approved before we do our annual budget. Because this work feeds into the annual budget, CIP really sets us up for that annual budget process. We're a bit behind schedule this year. It's been three years since we've done it last and gathering new information, updating the old information, making sure everything aligns with our master plans. Took a little bit longer than I expected, but now we're here. We have a draft complete plan. We're ahead of the first budget committee meetings. I'm happy about that. And I personally found the CIP process was helpful as I was working with the community development managers to develop our departmental budget. Here are some category totals for the five-year CIP. The total, the five-year total for the entire CIP is about one hundred and ninety million. Facilities and equipment coming in at about seven point three million. Parks and recreation, just over one hundred and thirty million. Technology, about one hundred and fifty-five thousand. Transportation at sixteen point five million and utilities, just around thirty-two point four million. I'm gonna walk through a few highlights from each of the categories. Plan for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. We have departmental representatives available in case any project-specific questions come up that I can answer myself. Or we can always take those back if we need to dig down into them a bit. So. Major project and facilities and equipment category for fiscal year twenty-four is the One Need a Pole Center metal siding project for two hundred and seventy-five dollars. We also have a variety of HVAC replacement projects at the library and city offices. Operations building and the police station together, those total about a hundred thousand dollars. And we're also looking at the Blue Lot ADA project that includes design and construction for about seventy thousand. Parks and Recreation have a lot going on. I want to highlight the Greenway and Path Expansion Project. This is an ongoing project that allocates approximately two point seven million per year for the development of an interconnected system of trails and related facilities. The Stone Ridge Park Renovation Project is two point five million to renovate the park, which was built in nineteen seventy-seven. And needs some upgrades to address accessibility and safety issues. In addition, some other amenities. The New Natural Areas is a two million dollar project in fiscal year twenty-four. I think there's going to be some additionals and additional funding in later years. This is a Parks Bond project. To plan, design, and develop a variety of trails, greenways, natural areas of parks from the Parks Master Plan. And then the new parks project is another bond project for four million. Plan for fiscal year twenty-four for the acquisition of acquisition, planning, design, and development of future parkland. I know they're busy trying to find more places to expand our park right now. Transportation highlights, we have the Boones Ferry Corridor project. This is three million budgeted in TDT to improve sidewalks and add bike lanes on the south end of Boones Ferry Road. That's a big project. Walton Sherwood Road, Martin Azzi to I five, one point five million in fiscal year twenty-four in TDT funds to improve traffic flow, safety, and pedestrian improvements along to Walton Sherwood Road. We have the transportation system plans, about a four hundred thousand dollar project, two hundred and fifty thousand budgeted in fiscal year twenty-four in the Road Operating Fund. I'll be back a bit later to talk about the transportation system plan with you all. And then finally, we have the Herman Road Project for three point five million road. It's a three point five million road widening project from Teton to Walton Road. That's funded in the Leavitton District and the TDT fund. So transportation is a good example of the diversity of funding sources that are captured in all of these different categories. And we have some utility projects to highlight. The B-level transmission upsizing is a two million dollar major water project to install an eighteen-inch seismic lever strain pipe from Norwood Reservoir Site to I Box Street. That's split between water operating and water STC. The SCADA system improvements at about one point three billion. That's budgeted in fiscal year twenty-four to finish up SCADA project. Sixty-fifth and Nyberg Trunk Line, that's a one million dollar sanitary sewer trunk line project that is a hundred percent eligible for Clean Water Services Fund is funding. So we have it budgeted here fiscal year twenty-four, but as we start to construct that, we'll be reimbursed by CWS for that project. So this is an example of project that ends up in our CIP and our budget, but that relies on outside funding to some extent. Or a hundred percent in this case. Finally, is the Siuslaw Stormwater Quality retrofit and Ninety-Ninth Oak Hill Stormline Reconstruction Project. Seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this one. And this is actually a combination of two projects at each end of the Indian Meadows Greenway. Though this was identified by staff during the CIP review process and our amazing Public Works and Engineering Team realized that it would make sense to combine these projects into a single project. Move some funds around and make it happen. So this is a great example of how the CIP not only helps us coordinate projects, but also informs the budget process each year. And I don't have a slide for this, but I wanted to give a shout out to Info Services. They are planning to replace the police mobile data terminals this coming year for ninety-four thousand dollars. Before I open it up for questions and comments, I wanted to highlight a few exciting changes that you can anticipate in the future. We are transitioning our CIP process away from the old system of spreadsheets and Word documents into the Questica interface, which staff uses for operating and personnel budgeting. So as this year's CIP was in development, we were also working with a consultant from Questica to design.
Did you see how little went to IT stuff?
Oh, I think I'm back. Okay. So Matt Warner and I worked on that project closely together. And so next year we'll be doing all of our capital planning within the Questica system. And we'll be looking into using that software to develop this CIP document. So it might have a slightly different look and feel, but hopefully it will be much easier and less painstaking for everyone involved with putting this together. Final note, my plan is to bring this back to you for adoption at the May eighth meeting, likely on consent agenda unless there are any major issues or concerns with this. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Cody. Councilbrooke.
Thank you, Cody. My question, I don't mean to sound like a broken record, but the siding for the One Need a Pole Center, I was just curious if there's any consideration for approaching the funding through the PAB. On that, we just funded two very similar projects and they were there were no competing cities. So just curious. And then if that were a consideration, it wouldn't matter. My question, I guess, procedurally to, just like with this other one. If you found grant funding, then move it and add more money on.
Right. Not that I know of, to the best of my knowledge, this was always planned to be a general fund project. However, I know that we're always looking for alternative sources. So if anything came up on that we look into it and I can definitely check in with Dawn and with our facilities and maintenance team to see if they've looked into any of those alternatives.
Yeah, we just, we haven't, they haven't been as competitive as they have been in the past and there's definitely money there and they're definitely a very similar project. And then also just a reminder around any thing that has to do with traffic flow and safety while school. Economic zone.
That's person Pratt.
First, I want to say I really liked how it set up. So I hope it's a similar thing because I wrote down, what about this and that? And then, you know, you had the single sheet. So it was nice to just see that and be able to kind of see, but the one that really got me was that roof for the police station. I know it's coming up on the time, but it's just amazing that's four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for new roof. You know? But I guess prices have increased.
That's very true.
And it's got different angles and stuff, but that's amazing. It's that much. My question was, okay, so you had on your master plan. So like when we did the Parks Master Plan, was the funding for that listed on the CIP?
That was before my time, but my assumption is that it would have been, which is why the transportation system plan is listed here. And I'm sure that the water master plan was probably listed in the CIP in the past.
That's my question is like on the stormwater. There's, I know there's money funded for last year and probably will be this year for the Basalt Creek update of that. Why is that not in this?
I believe that we looked at that during the prioritization process and there weren't immediate plans to address it, but I could follow up with that team to find out why they've.
Yeah, I'm just a little confused because money was allocated for it, but.
Yeah.
No, I think what it was is it's in, it's in the operating budget. So if it's in the operating budget, it's not in CIP. Well, the, the stormwater for the Basalt Creek is in the, is in the operating budget. Yes, but we already did the majority of the master plan update. It's just the Basalt Creek portion of it. Yeah, right. Yeah, the master plan was adopted in two thousand and nineteen, I believe. The stormwater master planner, it was accepted.
Five thousand dollar light for the kids at the library. I'm sure it'd be awesome. But thank you. That was really nice that it was easy to find.
That's right.
I don't have like questions. I just want to say that I received probably about five or ten emails in the last couple of months that everyone's liking the improvement that's being done on this ferry row with sidewalk. Just hands on those who are in charge and putting all that together. Great work, everyone. I'm like great work. I mean, I, I wish I, you know, can tell you all the great things they say, but happening and people are seeing where their investment is going to.
Other questions or comments? Okay, the only question I have, Cody, is I haven't dug into it. On the vehicle replacement, is that I'm assuming it's police vehicles, maintenance vehicles. Are the EV vehicles part of this also?
Yeah, that's actually something I probably should have mentioned. Something that changed this year in path iterations of this CIP, you would have noticed each vehicle budgeted in individual funds. However, since the Vehicle Replacement Fund has been established, we listed all of those vehicles under that. And so those are broken out based on replacement schedules developed by our facilities maintenance manager. And those are plugged appropriately across the five years based on when we think we're going to begin to replace those and EV should be included in. Thank you.
I have one last question. In the future, will you be adding like a playground equipment replacement in this list or is that included now?
I think that would be a parks-related question if that's part of their plan. But if it's over ten thousand, I'm sure it would be in the plan. Yeah.
Okay. She's still scrolling.
Oh, I don't have.
Okay. Anyone else?
This seems so, we have two hundred and fifty pages.
That's true. All right. Well, thanks, Cody. Thanks for the update and looking forward to seeing it in its final form. All right. That brings us to item number two. Riverfront Park Property Acquisition Due Diligence Presentation and Findings. Welcome, Ross and Rich.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilors. We glad to be here to talk about a a topic that has been before you several times now and, and we are back with some more information for you. An opportunity to go back and talk a little bit about where we've come from and where this came from, this desire. And the work that we've done since we last talked about this topic and where we propose recommend we go. Staff recommendation queue. So the Riverfront Park property concept is really a, we heard this from our community, a desire to, to, to connect with the river in a different way. We heard this through our system plan, our master plan update two thousand and eighteen, adopted in two thousand and nineteen. And that was really that, that that are, many of our, our businesses, some of our parks, properties are really, it's really difficult to get down to the water, down to the river, to see the river and interact with the river. And, and so we heard that from our community members. It shows up in our system plan. It shows up. It showed up when we, when we did a lot of the, the connection with community around our parks bond as well. Heard this, this topic come up as well. And so as you're well aware, we, during the bond, we identified, as we heard this, we identified sort of conceptually what this could look like on the kind of that intro slide. Purely conceptual, really intended to, to begin conversation and provoke thought about what this, what this can become. We took that, we heard from our community members, we heard from you. And we heard from our voters through the ball, the passage of the bond, that yes, let's, let's figure out where this is. And so the next slide shows you a a section of property that's been for sale for quite a while in Walton. We had brought a purchase and sale agreement to you that you authorized. So we have entered into a purchase sale agreement for the purchase of this property. Included in that PSA, that purchase and sale agreement is a due diligence period for us to, to really look at this site and, and determine if this, if this is the site, if this is the place where our community desires and, and dreams are. This is how we connect to the river. And so we've had the time and opportunity to bring a fantastic group of professionals on board. Consultants that, that know this work, that have done this work in other communities across the country, up and down the West Coast. And so Rich is, Rich is going to talk to you about that in just a second. But you can see that the connection point, that dashed line, not only is this a site for waterfront activity and connection, but it's also the connection to the Walton River Greenway Trail that we've got, we've got a gap. And this is, this potentially closes that gap. It's really then a connection across that crosswalk over to the existing trail behind the library and city offices. So that's one advantage to the site. Just on the next slide, just a quick overview of, of kind of council vision priorities and how this connects inclusive community, connected and informed. You know, the, you know, the vision items and the priorities of our city. Really, we really feel like this is a unique site in that this potentially is the only from what we've heard from Metro staff. This is potentially the only waterfront access site that's on a TriMet line in the metro region. So there's a, there's an advantage to this site over others on the river because of the, the accessibility that that, that that creates. And so that was, that was something we learned before and through this process was confirmed. That, that really aligns kind of, I think with, when we think about a thriving economy in the downtown core area that's accessible by all community members. That we're, we're acquiring a, a really interesting section here that not only includes the riverfront, but also the creek that flows through this property. We think about potential flooding in the future. Can this site help alleviate some of that flooding and mitigate and create space for the floodwaters? And so that's just sort of a quick, a quick snapshot of how some ways that this site aligns with, with council vision priorities. And then of course, our, our system plan, our master plan adopted in two thousand and nineteen. This is the foundational planning document that that we're doing a lot of our work around and that was adopted by you in two thousand and nineteen. So you can see that some of the goals that were affirmed as well, as I mentioned previously, through the park bond focus groups and surveys that we conducted. These goals and desires were confirmed. And we think this site, this is a site where we're uniquely able to, to, to check some of the boxes on these goals. I'll turn it over to Rich now, and he's going to talk about some of the technical work that we've done over the past few months.
Good evening. Thank you, Ross. Just a quick overview of the acquisition process. We came to council in December and you directed us to negotiate the property purchase. That resulted in February, a purchase and sale agreement being approved by council. And so we're back, we're back with the due diligence. And again, the sale price was based on a certified appraisal. So for the technical information and data, we did fairly extensive number of site assessments on the property to assure that it's going to be a good fit for parkland. There is a summary in the packet that was done by Walker Nacy. And so environmental assessment, there were no identified hazards or issues during the environmental assessment, the encroachment survey, no physical structures encroaching onto the property. The bridge inspection, we were happy to have gotten a seven out of nine, the nine, a nine being a new bridge and a seven being in good condition for the bridge. And this was a thorough assessment. These were the designers of the Kia Cuts Bridge that inspected this bridge.
And Rich, the bridge that, so that if you're not familiar with the site, the bridge is, was previously constructed by a developer with the intent to develop the site that that development then did not proceed. And so the bridge is still on the site. And so Rich, what Rich was referring to is specific to that. That bridge that was previously constructed that we would be potentially acquiring if we decided to proceed with this, with this purchase and sale agreement.
Yeah, it, it spans Hedges Creek. Water access and assessment, we met with Clean Water Services. It's allowable and it's achievable. Park development study, there are some flood and environmental permitting. There are some flood and environmental permit challenges, but nothing that prevents us from being a park site. It's it's all doable and we'll talk to you a little bit about that in the next page. Identified issues, two, two issues came up on both adjacent properties. To the west, we have apartments during 2004, the city. Put in sidewalks, did a road improvement on Boons Ferry from Martin Assi to Twalatin Road. At that time, the city eliminated the drive aisle into the apartments and the city facilitated an easement. Through this property, it's it's like an L shape right at the beginning of Boons Ferry Road. So we're aware of that. And as part of the property sale. City legal is advised making some updates to that easement, so a fairly. Easy process as we go into closing. To the east, we have two residential units. There's actually three in the property. One access is directly from Boons, the A frame house. There are two other houses to the east on the property. During 2017, I believe the bridge was damaged or washed out. That accessed this from the traffic light. Right? Down Martin Assi into the property. And that was rebuilt, but didn't work out, I believe permitting wise. So in 2018, the property owners started taking access through this property. There doesn't appear to be an easement issue or a rights issue with that. I believe what we were, we will be suggesting is issuing that property owner a license to access her property. Until a point that is determined that she rebuilds that bridge. We met with her. She indicated she'd rebuild the bridge if she can't take access through this property. And so I think the issue of license is what city legal advises with. Us setting a time limit of, you know, within a year build a build a bridge within a couple of years. Maybe not until development of the property that hasn't been defined. And so those are really the only issues that we encountered during a fairly extensive assessment, multiple assessments of the property. Wanted to share just the general site design with you. And so you can see here the river access, this is just a bubble diagram. We're not into design yet. But a bubble diagram, a river access here, wide here, this is where the big trees have an opening. These parking areas are areas that are high and dry out of the flood. And so parking seems to be most appropriate there. There can be some park amenities in this area, picnic tables, other support. Recreation facilities. And so that kind of gives you an overview. This is a pole center right over here. This is the apartment complex. We're talking about over here. This is that. Drive aisle that accesses through this property to the apartments. And again, this is one of the structures. There's. Two residences over here that are taking access right in here. So that gives you an overview of the. You know, potential site design in the future. With that, next steps, we do have a final approval. Unless you decide something differently, coming back to you next meeting for consideration. And then we work on the easements, the license. During closing and would expect to close toward. The end of May, sometime early June. With that, we'll be happy to entertain any questions or comments and seek your direction on where where you'd like to go on this.
Questions? President Pratt.
That existing bridges, the I know you haven't been concept planning really, but is the idea that you extend that then? And use that?
We'll, we'll just go back.
Okay.
Slides, Counselor.
Yeah, I see it on here. I know it ends by the pole center, right?
Yes, some really interesting, it's a great question, some really interesting thoughts and questions produced by this. Really rough, very rough kind of initial idea of what you could do at the site. The opportunities are many. And obviously, you know, the 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 bridge is. Is a is a clear potential access way into the site. And so somehow some type of a. Yeah, vehicular. You know, an access road into the park across that bridge seems like a reasonable. Way to to think about this.
Right, especially if you've got river access and I X.
Right, yeah, so maybe some type of a. Pull in, drive over the bridge, some kind of a turnaround, drop off your your kayak canoe, stand up paddleboard. Come back out and we have city parking lots right around this area. Park your car, go enjoy your day on the water or your day at the beach or your day at the park. And and then come back in and pick up your 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 boats.
That sounds nicer than backing up a really long narrow.
So this, yeah, so so some really interesting questions. I think came up with our consultant and staff team really. So this is obviously, we haven't done community engagement. Design charrettes and some fun, some fun opportunities to really brainstorm and think imaginatively. But just kind of sitting in our little silo, staff and consultant silo, couldn't help but think about kind of the questions that you raised. And in addition to that, what about the pole center? What about the 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 east side of the pole center? And what if the, what if the pole center? If there was some way to access the pole center, not from one side like it is now, but what if you could access it from both sides? And and what if the? Yeah. So just some really interesting thoughts and and. Obviously, a lot more work to do, really kind of fun, imaginative, community involvement, engagement work. That I think would 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 definitely be in the future if if you give us directions perceived.
Other questions? For Saka.
Um, so we just learned that. We're thinking about reciting the pole center in our last presentation. And so looking at this map, I mean, you see, and then you talk about. Having access through both sides of the pole center. To me, I kind of see this with even having like some sort of like artwork on the back that brings in nature. So it's not like, you know, this metal siding into, so I just hope that we kind of are thinking about that as we're planning this location. And what the back of that might look like and is a metal siding backing, maybe not we want it to be. But just something that came up looking at this. And then speaking of parking, and I know that you're not this far, but just you could give me an idea. We're talking about turning around and. But about how many parking spots do you vision this area having? And I know we do have the parking like across the street that. That is city parking, but it's onsite parking.
So we haven't got to that point yet that we're able to project parking.
I mean, because I know it's not that big of an area either. So just kind of. I have one more statement, I guess. It's kind of related, kind of unrelated, but. Being part of the parks conversation for a long time from master planning to parks bond. This has come up so many times in talking about this project in particular, but having a lot of. Food options. And again, I know it's not totally related, but. And even talking with our with our business leaders as well, having. You know, food options to bring down by the river, using our parks and food carts always comes up during this conversation. So I just want to throw that out there that I that there's a lot of people out there that I've talked to that kind of see these two. Project or this project sort of linked to like this food concept too of like having food to bring down to the river and having a place to access the river. To eat and that's kind of where that food part comes in, but. That conversation always comes up when it comes to this this water access. I think that's something that we need to think about too. As that this develops and how we're really going to sort of marry those two and bring our business community into. This conversation as well, because when we were talking about the. The bond and that that conversation with our business community, this was really important. This was a really important project for our business community. To have a place to to bridge those two. So just kind of want to, we could keep that in mind of planning this.
Thank you, Counselor. Yep, cert, absolutely. I think great questions that. You're correct, absolutely came up during the bond conversations about. The the synergies between a site like this and what happens when. Communities around the west, western United States have invested in riverfront access areas and what. What that has done for, when done right, when done well. In in connection with and in concert with business community, what what that does for the business businesses. It's some fantastic examples in in case studies out there. That were correct, they were brought up during the the conversation and. So your questions, so Rich writing things down while you were talking, certainly questions we'll. Put at the heart of of community engagement and conversation if we decide to move forward with this is. What what does that, what does this site look like? Framed from that perspective and and how to, how to create mutually beneficial. Landscaping and and layout and flow so that we're benefiting not only. Food trucks, but also our local businesses at the same time and how how a site like this can create vibrancy that benefits everybody.
Other questions?
I, yeah.
Council Brooks and Octavio, you have one. Council Brooks, Octavio, and then.
Coming from a different perspective, I am curious. First with this bridge and then the easement issue and that other bridge. And the changes in land use because of. The. Potential and possibility of. Increased flooding as things continue to change. So I'm just curious around. Resiliency around these structures. And then. From a tic tac. So I I go in and do tai chi and yoga and stuff over at the pole center. And watch the deer walk around and right outside the window. And the baby deer and they use that brush area over there for habitat. So I'm also curious about. Not just resiliency, but sustainability and how we're thinking about this stuff and what we're going to do to. To invite people down, you know, it's kind of interesting with our river because in some ways the fact it's hidden gem makes it. More natural and better habitat or a lot of. Other inhabitants besides people inhabitants. And so. I know that this department's mindful about it, but I just want to bring that into the conversation as we're talking about food carts and. I just start seeing litter and start seeing a lot of different things and. And so it's not that I don't want businesses, but I do like the idea. That there's also a gateway to our downtown core from this area. And I'm just wondering how we can marry these things and be mindful of the existing non-people residents.
So during, just with. Yes, we will ensure that that is a part of the conversation as we're as we're engaging as well. We certainly, we certainly heard that as well is that. This is an opportunity not only for. Business, community, vibrancy and and visitors, driving visitors to the community. And providing space for our existing community to to recreate on the river. But it's also a chance for anybody who comes to the site to to learn about the river, learn about water quality, riparian health. And what that means in Twalatin and how they can contribute and be a part of it. And so there's, there was a good conversation about that. We've had. And it was so fun about where we're at a place like this and. In design, if you can call this design, very early, very, very early stages is is we can. We can iterate and think creatively. And so one of the things we've thrown out in conversations with. Key community members is what, what does this look like as an education site as well? And can we create a space where we can get our our youth down to the river level? And so that's just, yeah, something that we've absolutely talked about and and thought about and make sure that that's part woven into the conversation as we move forward.
And then just in that, was the bridge resiliency, not just a private owner building the bridge, but also whatever we're doing with. Bridges in these flood zones and what is that? Like, I like, I'm curious about, I don't, I'm not an expert on that, but I'm curious about that.
Gonzalez.
Very early in the concept, but this is the fun part. I find that I spend a lot of time at the Cook Park section out there, which is have that turnaround and. And it really gets packed. And so as we consider the future, food is going to be very important, restaurants and things. But if that turnaround would be great, because I see how Cook Park gets really backed up in that lower section when people are jumping off, dropping on the thing and then trying to. So when you mentioned that, that would be a really, yeah, it's very early.
President Pratt.
Well, mine was about the balancing the nature too, but and the other ideas, like you said, TriMet, so we also have Rideshare, so. I would think that's really important to promote, you know, ways to get there without a vehicle too.
No questions?
As as I was thinking about the backside of the pole center, I'm sorry, I I just popped in my head that the youth advisory, I believe. Just did this really cool like wall garden. So anyway, I hadn't think that might be really cool and I'm sorry to bring up something so specific, but it just popped in my head, so. Thought I'd share that.
Okay. Other question?
Just because we were talking about that sustainability, us more talking about driving in. Are we thinking about ways of mitigating drainage into the river? Are we going to have forests? Surfaces and be mindful around how we. And I think it speaks really well to what you said around education and examples. That others, since we preserve so many wetlands in our city that others can think about as well, business communities and. Mindful.
Sustainable. Product design. Sort of what I'm, what I'm gathering.
Yeah, I mean, we could talk with about the bio swells and we talk about how we can make the. I mean, one of the biggest issues, right? Our current ramp is that everything just goes flying down a concrete. Funnel into the river. So is there a way of showing like? The exact contrast when we're doing this and what we've learned since whenever that was built.
No questions? Right, I had the similar concerns as Council Brooks. About park, parking areas in a protected area. And especially an area tends to flood where oil runoff, gas runoff, don't want that in the wetlands. I also have some serious concerns about traffic. That intersection where it's at gets very busy. If you ever try to leave the Key Bank and make a left, head towards down towards O and A. It can be a bear to get out left. So you're going to have an additional. Traffic congestion here and you know, this is a Mike McCarthy going to, it's going to be a Mike McCarthy issue on how he's going to deal with this traffic. Because you've got a crosswalk on one side, you've got a traffic light on the other side, it's very, very close. And people do not yield at rush hour. On that road, we all know it. So I can see this as being a. Malicious issue traffic wise, if you want to have that circulation, similar to what Counselor Gonzalez was saying to get people in and out of there. It's going to be a choke point and looking forward to see how you're going to resolve that. It's going to be a choke point and looking forward to see how you're going to resolve that.
Come out of there, you can only turn right.
Yeah, it's gonna be right in, right out, yeah.
It looks like there might be ways to connect it to community park though.
Yeah, so, so.
Department complex is still up.
Oh, that's not one need to.
Bullseye is up there.
I think, just something we've discussed, staffing consultant level, this is certainly as we talked earlier about sort of connection to our our community vision and priorities. Goals from our system plan, just as I said, checks a lot of the boxes. This, and at the same time, is not a low level of complexity. Right. And so we're weaving together those those aspects and characteristics of this particular site and the desires of our community and our, and our goals and vision. And and so one of the things we've identified is is ensuring that design engineering team is is a competent, experienced group that has done work like this in the past is, as we've discussed is really, is really going to be important with this project. As is, as we've discussed, economic vitality and environmental sustainability and traffic. There are other elements and characteristics that we're going to need to consider as well. And so pulling together a team and community voices that can, that can reflect and bring expertise to this project is is really where we see the need from our perspective. So I think you're correct to point, point this.
But I think if I'm not mistaken, the, where we are at this point is are there any deal killers? You know, we did the the assessment is like, is it developable at to some degree? We don't know what, are there any, are there any things that that would prevent us from entering into a contract and sale? And then I think moving forward after that with, you know, the getting a competent team on board and and moving forward with all your feedback. But I think from our assessment is that this due diligence didn't highlight any, any deal killers.
I'm speaking for me. I I I'm really excited about it. I think everybody's just expressing all the areas, we want this to be as best it can be. And I know you guys would do that.
And then have the concern and the need to balance so much. Me is a big indicator of what a great piece of property this is because there's so much flexibility and there's so much. That's just to your point, these things that come up are sort of the embarrassment of Rich's conversation.
Agreed.
Mayor, if I can answer your question, your first part of your, your comment or question is, was just about runoff and you know, river health and concern and ensuring this purely conceptual image. The thinking in conversation amongst key stakeholders in our community, Twalton River Keepers was a part of the bond committee in a voice, obvious, obviously an advocate for for this type of facility and but you can see in this concept, one of the things that came out in conversations with the bond committee and and key stakeholders was was just what you brought up. And 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 so intentionally in the concept here was some type of tiered steps down to the river is, Council Brooks, as you mentioned, that that the old style boat ramp where water just sheets down and carries whatever else into the river as well. This is not that. And that this would have some type of of structures built into it so that there's infiltration, natural infiltration that happens and filtering, natural filtering with with plants and and some creative solutions that we don't know what those are yet, but some some innovative creative solutions that could act. Hopefully act as a model for river access sites throughout our region and we feel like there's opportunity to to demonstrate that.
My concern, I mean, this, as Sherilyn said, that Pupu and the idea, I think it's a great idea. We just, you know, the things we gotta look at and you guys are acknowledging that there's things to look at. And my concern isn't that the Walton River overflowing its banks, it's Hedges Creek. Hedges does it all the time. Hedges Creek during the Arbor Day planting, that water was up there, it was moving. Hedges blows out his banks all the time. And it's, you know, that's why the bridge is there, the over hedges. And that's where I could see going over and get into parking lots as it does next to the O and A building. That parking lot always floods out, go, and the water goes in there, then eventually collects back from that parking, from our parking lot in back in the hedges. But at least we have a model, we knew what happens. So let's, let's, let's fix it when we do this. All right, anything else? Thank you, gentlemen.
So if you'd like, we are planning at this point, talked about on May eighth the May council meeting, we will come back to you with, on consent to for your final consideration to move forward, following this due diligence report. And this would be an acquisition with Parks Bond dollars. So this would be one of the, one of the first expended items that that you would authorize to spend Parks Bond dollars. We'll bring that back to you on the eighth.
Right, thank you. All right, that brings us to our prep for our city council meeting and council roundtable. I believe Counselor Gonzalez finally gets to do the pledge tonight. No one's gonna wiggle their way in on you, no boy scouts, no jail pots today. We've got one proclamation, I believe, Mental Health Awareness Month proclamation, would like to do that. Council Brooks, okay. We've got the recognition of the Twalton High School basketball champions. I'm assuming they'll get here a half hour or so. All right. On, any questions on items on consent?
Yes, I'd like to pull Resolution fifty six eighty eight twenty three.
All right. So when we get to that, go ahead and bring up it, do you want to pull it to be heard later tonight? Any other issues with the consent agenda? Fifty six eighty three dash, fifty six eighty eight dash twenty three, item number three. Any other, no problems with the other two? All right. So with that, I'll go ahead and start council communications. I'll start with Counselor Gonzalez. All right, Council Brooks.
Several meetings, we had our budget meeting, meeting, which was a good start for our conversation and always a big thank you to Don Hudson, our fearless leader on budget. And for me, I was way feeling good about where we are as a city itself are, so. About that meeting. I also attended the PAB meeting where we approved funding. Like I said before, there's funding for senior centers that were approved as well as new funding for Twalton Valley. Family Bronx. So that is something more towards our end county. As a couple jurisdictions, including and Hillsborough have been putting some money for some things. And Tigard is also taking its own some capturing some funds on their own as well. There is more opportunity to focus energy towards our area of the community and work with others in our area to to create more service opportunities here. So I just want people to be aware of that. And because it is a shift and it's happened over time with the mayor being on it, it's changed quite a bit over time. So just something to look at and to look at those grants that have been written to see if there's ways that we can capture those dollars that are very similar to what I mean. And then I attended the I did not attend the executive committee for the Regional Water Providers Consortium because it's been with the budget community meeting. But what we were doing was putting together exercise from visioning that we'll be putting forth towards the next federal meeting. And then finally, I attended the Twalton Arts Advisory Committee. And the Twalton Arts Advisory Committee historically has recognized artists that contribute to our community, not, not financially, but with with verbal recognition, with plaques and with celebrating the artists. And it's a collaboration between oftentimes businesses and artists as well. So the committee is very invested in people knowing about the opportunities of putting someone up that they find contributes to our community. I think that the arts, writing an article for Twalton Life. And so just keep your eyes open for more about that and what that is. And we're looking at one particular artist that we, that they are, that they might be considering. And then the other I think reminder that I would say is we have those traffic box wraps. I hope people enjoy the traffic box wraps. And we also have the opportunity, if some business or an individual wants to sponsor those traffic box wraps. We have other sites available. There's a map you can go look on. And I'm sure that the Parks Department would be happy also to give anybody guidance, more information about that. But that's something that's an opportunity for the community and for businesses to be involved with as well. That covers, they've also been meeting, and I think I mentioned this last time, but around Veterans Plaza and in collaboration with other groups. So so an exciting time to be a part of the arts committee and to be talking about parks.
That's for Saco.
Besides the budget meeting, I had no official meetings, but I did want to make sure everybody was aware that there's a grassroots effort to put together a a pride event in Twalton on June third at ten AM at, starting at the Twalton Commons. We are working with city staff to make sure we have all the correct elements. So everything's legitimate. And so thank you for staff that are helping us with that. And so, and just some brief history on that is that TTSD and and Tigard had come together to put on an event, came to Twalton, and it happened to conflict with some of our current events. So this is, some community members had a desire to still do something this year. So I invite everybody to just save the date on their calendar, June third, ten AM, Twalton Commons.
Council Hillier.
Yes, I'm part of the Washington County Youth Substance Use Prevention Collaborative. And I know our police department and city staff and different people are invited. So I know this isn't an official thing, but I thought I'd just give kind of a brief overview. It meets bimonthly. We met on April the sixth. The substance use, they offered a strategic prevention wellness grant and for the first time in, since two thousand and ten, Tiger, the city Tiger turns the tide and Twalton together have not been funded through these funds, which is kind of an interesting thing. So groups are still waiting to hear about the Community Health Improvement Plan, but we really got a deep dive from the presentation from the health, sorry, this, there's a huge acronym that I figure out. Like, oh, my gosh, I thought it's the county's ray, the research analytics, information and data team prevented on the quick something, which is the Healthy Columbia Willamette Collaborative, the health, community health needs assessment. There's a whole lot of really deep, good information about intersection of mental health, physical health, substance use prevention and other social determinants of health that affect across our county. So if people are interested in learning more, I'm happy to share about that. And then just also just a reminder about the Winona Grange Free Family Fun Event happening this Saturday, April the twenty ninth. It seeds and seedlings, garden prizes, spring crafts and ice cream that we will be there serving. The leaf students, Winona Grange, if you don't know where that is, it's on one of the commons and it's from one to four. And there'll be Oregon Bee Project Speaker, Master Gardeners, Creating Northwest Bee Habitats and for H Junior Beekeeping Information. So check them out on social media.
That's for us.
Thank you. Yeah, I attended the core the core area parking on the eighteenth of April via Zoom. So thank you for those that provided that visibility for me. That was out of town on a conference. But we approved the budget that is specifically for that area and it was a short meeting, but a very, it's always, it's my second meeting since I joined the committee. It seems kind of, people seem to be very positive about the budget and and what the direction that we're moving forward. So you will see more later, I guess, if we adopt the larger, bigger and grand budget, but so far that portion.
President Pratt.
I attended the C four Metro meeting. It was Trimit talking about they're going to have a study and do a transit project in eighty second avenue. And we heard about it because one mile of it's in Clackamas County. And, but they're, they're really they have some good ideas that that's, I guess, the most used rider or bus ridership. It's the most heavily used in the region. So even though, like Clackamas County, kind of like us, says, what about us, not just Portland? That we're in very much in support of it. They're going to try to make, see how they can make the line more frequent. Some of that will be given up some stock, but they're trying to do more covered and covered areas and make it safer to cross streets because some of the bus stops are, where you can't cross eighty second, there's no crosswalks. So it was kind of interesting. And then the other meeting I attended and Counselor Brooks was there was this morning, we had that climate action and task force and we're getting to nitty gritty details of appearance. And I just have to call out Maddie and Nick for all the work because it's compared to the Clackamas County one, it's amazingly better and really well done. That's it.
Uh, busy week. Of course, majority of it was all about tolling. But April eleventh, pretty intriguing seminar, I attended the USDOT Charging and Fueling Infrastructure. Other than ACN, the acronym for that is CFI. Seminar on how you can access the Department of Transportation dollars under the federal program to roll out EVs. So looking forward to learning more about that and how Tiger Twalton may be able to team up on this in the coming weeks. On April fourteenth, I attended the virtual Washington County Mayor's Lunch where the Tri-County Cultural Plan was asking what arts and cultural programs are needed in Washington County. It was quite an interesting discussion because most of the cities have their own programs that they do and never reached out to this organization before. It's, it's called arcreativefuture.org. And so we were just trying to figure out what they they needed from us, what they were asking from or from us, because, you know, we have items like Viva Twalton, Corinos has their programs, Hillsborough has their programs. And I guess as a funding mechanism, if we are looking for money for additional cultural programs that they're out there and willing to work with cities to assist in developing these cultural arts and Programs, arts, art, arts and cultural programs and to maybe help us do maybe some additional. Festivals or events, so. Again, arcreativefuture.org, they're looking for to help out cities. Later that day, Representative Walters had a meeting with. Mayors of Lake Oswego, Westland and myself to discuss, but a shocker, tolling and what's going on in the legislature. On the seventeenth, the Washington County Corning Committee met. June is, June fifth through eighth is the JPAC trip. Probably be going on behalf of the Washington County Cities, we go to Washington DOT. And our congressional representatives asking for transportation money. Also at that meeting, the two million dollar TDT grant was approved for Urban Road, as Cody mentioned. Metro was there presenting the twenty twenty three RTP project list. They've got the project listing, now they're gonna do an analysis and a lot of the analysis is gonna be put out to the public to review. So they have a survey out and the link is really hard to find on Metro's website. So I'm probably gonna put it on my Facebook page and then I'll shoot a link. To Sherlin to get on the city's website because Washington County is looking for Washington County residents feedback and input into this metro program. Traditionally, it's predominantly folks in Portland, so they want, you know, Washington County residents to, to pipe in about the projects that are important to us here in Washington County. The UGV work plan was rolled out, where discussions are coming up, coming about possible UGV expansion. So Metro staff started laying out the groundwork on what can be expected, what's gonna be needed for Metro staff working with cities. On the potential of a UGV expansion. And finally, Washington County presented the transit study that they've been working on for the last year or so. It had a lot of community engagement, no big shockers on how certain areas of Washington County need much better TriMet. Service, and if we don't have TriMet service, we're looking for shuttle service to be a ride connection. When that ended, had a half hour break and had the Washington County Mayor's Meeting with Chair Harrington. Reviewing again the time, place and manner camping organizations that are being implemented by the cities. And majority of the time we're speaking about the county is in, gonna start a broadband initiative using some of their ARPA dollars. They have a concern that there's a lot of unserved areas in Washington County. Shockingly, there's areas of Beaverton that still doesn't have decent internet access. So they're gonna be working with cities in throughout Washington County. Basically, we look at the infrastructure, the access and affordability of broadband throughout our county. So look forward to more of that coming out from Washington County. The nineteenth, I head down to Salem to meet with the Clackamas County Caucus, that's both the. House members and senate members or whatever you wanna call them down in Salem. The Clackamas County staff came along with myself. Commissioner Savis, Mayor Rory from Westland again, Mayor Buck. We presented what we thought about the NEPA and the. Environmental analysis that ODOT gave. The room was packed full of our representatives. We had a very, very welcoming. Audience. They're starting to get traction, we're starting to get their attention. IPV four or IP four is looming over their head, if the legislature doesn't deal with tolling and the pushback on tolling. The citizens initiative is gonna take their power away. Because no one's under the assumption that if it gets on the ballot, that would fail. And with that beyond the ballot would say that ODOT could not implement a toll without voters of people in the state of Oregon. So if they don't pay attention to this and start dealing with it. ODOT will be scrambling for funding. By the end of November twenty four, because that's the goal for these folks to get it on the ballot, they have just hired Julie Parish to run the program. If you ever know, if you know Julie, you know she's a master organizer, master fundraiser, master of marketing. And she's now their point person to get this on the ballot. On the twentieth, we had the Clackamas County version of the Mayor's Chair Meeting, what a surprise, tolling. Talk more about tolling, and finally, today, we had the R-TAC meeting, the Regional Toll Advisory Committee. Our tolling, Cody, it was kind of a snoozer. Today, the. They ran out of time on the most important subject we're gonna talk about is how they're gonna measure the impacts of tolling on the corridors, we ran out of time. So the, we'll punt in that for a month, because we spent most of the time talking about. The equity model of tolling and the impact on low income and cultural disadvantage folks, how we're gonna make sure it doesn't. Impact them, you know, so poorly and so big enough. The impact on those folks is gonna be a much greater impact than on most, because when. You're looking at a family of four that's making sixty thousand dollars a year, you know, a thousand dollars in tolls gonna add up, where's that gonna come out of your budget? So there's a lot of effort going into this. And then what was frustrating, again, the second part of the meet, the meeting was on public transit. And it was planning for public transit and how to get funding for it. But their window of implementing public transit solutions was like two, three years after tolling starts. And I, I voiced my opinion that you can't have, it has to be ready the day one you start tolling, there has to be an east-west line between Twelton and Oregon City. You can't start tolling without it, and that's. So more to come on that, and my last thing is. Those of you who know Robert Kellogg, I don't know if you know, Robert Kellogg was named and approved to be on the Board of TriMet. So he will be sworn in, I believe, next week by the governor. And so we've got, he will be taking the place of Linda Simmons on the TriMet Board of Directors. Congratulations to him.
Better watch out, some of us have a spoon.
Some of know where he works. Alright, is there anything else? Alright, then we're done about fifteen minutes early, so take a break, we'll come back at seven o'clock for our regular city council meeting, we're adjourned till seventh.